Oh, hi. How are you? You're right up here. Come on in. Up the room. You can go this way. It's easier to go up.
Sometime soon. Were there changes?
Hi, how are you?
There's no way they already went over it because this is the first time. This is the first time that a quick check is actually proposed. I think it was kind of widely known that that was going to be the application. Yeah, because they had to work out some things. They had to work out their access. That may have been it. That may have been it. It may have been. They're going to have a new driveway. They're not going to access through the orthopedic. They're going to propose a new driveway. The person that would be scared. And where the detention space in it. Detention space. So the guy who's going to come off of World Spirit. Oh, you snapped it. Yeah, that's exactly the way it is. For entrance and off. He didn't want them to have quick check level traffic going through that orthopedic place. Coming out right at the foot of World Spirit Drive. That's really bad area. That's why they kicked off the quick check the first time. Probably a little detention space. Well, it's your typical. I don't know what's big. I mean, it's the five tons worth of buildings with. Kind of monster, but it's.
We were talking like that and everything went in and out.
Which one doesn't work?
Okay, Christine, are we ready?
Yes.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Okay, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice to this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase.
Here.
Coral Hauck.
Here.
Maher Rafik. Cecil McIver, as well as Mr. Mettler asked to be excused this evening. Mustafa Mansray. Charles Brown.
Here.
Robert Thomas. Jennifer Ragnow.
Here.
Godwin Amalola.
Here.
And Chairman Orsini.
Here. And for the board, I'd like to introduce Maher, who is our new Mayor's Representative to the Planning Board. Welcome. Okay, so we'll start with the minutes, right, of the regular meeting, January 16th. Are there any comments or questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, before we start the meeting, everybody has to make sure they talk into the mics and anybody coming up to speak has to say your name, spell it, and your address. And anybody sitting at the table needs to fill out who you are, like your name. Not you, but. Okay, Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Coral Hauck.
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Godwin Amalola.
Yes.
Chairman Orsini.
Yes. Resolutions. We have Resolution Adriano Colleoni, PLN 1800013.
Doesn't somebody have to move it?
Yeah, I think that was in the February 20th packet, correct?
Yeah.
I don't think it was in today's packet. Or was it?
No, we didn't have the meeting because of the snow. We had to carry it, I think.
Okay, no, I just wanted to let people know where it was.
Is somebody going to move it?
Move.
Second.
Coral Hauck.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Godwin Amalola.
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini.
Yes. Okay, so we have a couple of items tonight, the first of which is a presentation from the Board of Education for the planned use of the Consolata Missionaries' property. So I'll turn it over to Vince Dominak.
Vince Dominak, the Township's Economic Development Director. As most of you know, the Township and the Board of Education negotiated a land swap and as part of that land swap, the Board of Ed is getting a portion of the property that the township purchased from Consolata. Tammy Stucko is here tonight from SSP Architects to give a presentation on the goings on and what the Board of Ed has in mind for the property. The reason for the presentation is tonight, as most of you know, we haven't had one in a while, but anytime a public entity such as the Board of Ed is expending public funds, the Board has to take a look at it and make a determination whether or not what is being proposed is consistent with the master plan. So after the presentation is completed, I would ask that the Board make that consideration. If there are any questions at any point from the Board members of the public regarding the actual land swap, the deal itself, our Township Manager, Bob Vornlocker, is here and he's more than happy to explain or go over any of that. Tammy is here to go over the uses. And with that.
Thank you very much. As Vince said, I'm here on behalf. I'm sorry?
Please.
Sure.
Raise your right hand. Sal, we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got.
I do.
Name an address for the record, please.
Tammy Stucko, 15 Imperial Drive, Somerville, New Jersey.
Can you spell your last name, please? Thank you.
Thank you. So the plan that you see on the screens are the Consolata property. The part that is in color is the part that's proposed to be owned by the Board of Education. On that property are three buildings that will be occupied by the Board of Ed as well as the old farmhouse. This plan up on the screen is what will be renamed the Community Center. Inside that Community Center is proposed for the food service offices as well as the registrar's office. Also, various training rooms and meeting rooms will be in this space. The Board of Ed is currently working with identified Township representatives to identify any other areas that might be needed that could be included in the program within this space as it is being labeled the Community Center. This will be the first one that you come across as you enter the property. This is the basement level of what will be called Curriculum Hall. Curriculum Hall will house offices, generally various directors that are currently located throughout a number of the schools. Right now, their curriculum advisors are spread throughout the district. Central Administration Building is the last of the occupied buildings. This is three floors. This is the basement level. First floor and second floor. This building will also house offices and conference rooms. Most of the staff that is currently in their Middle Bush office space will go into this space as well as some of the other key personnel that are in various offices throughout the district. One of the key things that the move does for the Board of Education is it really consolidates what's in Middle Bush and spread through some of their other schools, offices within their schools. It really works to centralize the administrative staff for the Board of Education. So that's pretty much how they plan to use Consolata in a nutshell. If there's any questions.
So Vince, can you explain to the Board a little more about what we're swapping? Obviously, this is great to have, you know, reuse of buildings on open space where they're often, it's demolition by neglect or, you know, otherwise goes unused. So can you talk a little bit about what the swap?
I'll have Mr. Vornlocker, Township Manager, explain that.
Good evening, Board.
Can I swear you in?
Sure.
Would you like to swear me in? Absolutely.
Raise your right hand, please. Sal, we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got.
I do.
Thank you.
So the question of what is being swapped. So the current administration building at the corner of Charles Street and Amwell Road and the property behind it is the property currently owned by the Board of Education that the Township will be receiving in return for the building property on Route 27 at the former Consolata Mission. And just a slight correction, it's not open space because it wasn't purchased with open space funds. It was purchased with municipal funds. That's what's enabling us to do this. If it had been open space, we wouldn't be able to do this.
Oh, you're talking about what Consolata was purchased with?
So the entire property was originally purchased with municipal funds. And then the portion that is being traded, so to speak, with the Board of Education was divided off and as well another portion of the property at the northeast corner that's being reserved for future use by the municipality. The rest of it was then refunded with open space funds. So the property that surrounds this parcel that was identified earlier is now dedicated open space. And this property currently is owned by the Township as municipal land, not as open space. And so the legal work that's now coming to a close is now going to result in that portion being deeded to the Board of Education and the property on Amwell Road and Charles Street being deeded to the Township.
Okay. So two follow-up questions for that. And thanks for the clarification because I had a conversation with Vince and he said you'd explain it. And he was right. The follow-up question is, down the road, if the Board of Education decides to vacate the Consolata premises, what would then happen?
So that, it would be, you know, as far as the Township is concerned and as far as legally, it's not deed restricted and they certainly could do that. The Board of Education is governed by a set of laws, though, that would. They're not able to just simply sell assets. Their statutes, and that's one of the reasons why this is happening the way it's happening is they also can't buy the land the way other government entities can acquire property. If the Board of Education, with the approval of the Department of Education, was going to dispose of this property, they could do that.
Okay, so I think you sense where I was headed with that is. Give me some reassurance that were that to happen in the future, as an extreme example, that we don't get a strip mall in the middle of open space.
Well, I think that this Board now needs to look at what the zoning on that property is.
Yeah. Okay.
But that property, if it were subdivided, it'd still be subjected to all the other development ordinances.
Absolutely.
And go before boards, before use change or?
I mean, one of the most important things is that access to this site is by easement over Township open space.
So anybody who wants access to the property?
So there's no frontage. This property has no frontage at all.
I mean, it's an extreme example, but I have to ask the question.
And I understand your question and it's a very sound and logical one to ask. It's just that this property currently will have no frontage. Its access is via easement across Township-owned property. It's basically an island in the middle of land that is either owned by the state of New Jersey as open space related to Six Mile Run or our own open space now.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, and that's something we should look at, obviously, not just because of the potential future reuse, you know, if that was to ever come to be, but also just the fact that currently the property is owned cluster residential. One of the main purposes of the Township acquiring this property was to prevent the development of this site with hundreds and hundreds of townhomes or apartments. So certainly, we should rezone that property to match its current and future use.
Yes.
So we can do that in the coming months.
Okay. Last question for me. The property at Amwell and Charles.
Yes.
That is going to be swapped to the Township and not be open space. What's, right?
Well, I don't know. No decision has been made by the Township at this point as to what will happen with that property. It'll be several years before the Board of Education can completely vacate it. There's a number of issues that relate to them needing to continue to occupy at least portions of the building until all operations, including IT functions, can move from that building to the buildings on Route 27. So there's also an occupancy agreement that's being entered into as part of the whole land swap that will allow them to continue to occupy that building for as long as they need to get all of the other operations out. Once that's done, then, you know, the governing body will have to decide what happens with that property. And what I will say is that there's no decisions made at this point. Some discussions, but no decisions.
So as a comfort, let's say if it's necessary to the neighbors in that particular area, everything is going to be maintained as is in the near future until another decision can be made. And those decisions, of course, aren't going to be made without public input information given, information sessions and so on.
Absolutely.
So nothing's going to change. It's outward appearance.
Nothing's going to change for the short-term future. The Board of Education will continue to occupy at least portions of the building for the foreseeable future while they situate themselves at the Route 27 property. And then once all of that is done and they vacate the buildings, because there actually are two. You know, the Township still owns the former municipal building across the street where the maintenance operation is housed for the Board of Education. And that building will also revert back to the Township. They lease it now on, you know, a annual dollar a year lease. And so that building will also become vacant at some point in the future once everything moves to the Route 27 property. But for the time being, and once that's done, the property will just be maintained in its current state until the Township decides where we'll go with it.
Okay. Opening up the Board of Hall for any?
Yes, I believe this question is for. Can you give me an example of the kind of training rooms you guys are planning to have within the complex?
You're talking about the front community building?
Yes, please.
So I can answer that. So the agreement that we're entering into with the Board of Education calls for the renovation of the front building. And then, as was heard earlier, the two functions in that building will be food services and the registrar's office, which are the highest traffic offices for the Board of Education's current administration building for parents. So being that that's in the front of the building, those two offices will occupy what is now, if any of you are familiar with the building, the front, as you enter into the main entrance, on the left are offices and on the right was the gift shop. Those areas in the front, separate from the rest of the building, will be occupied by the Board of Education. The remainder of the building will be rehabilitated and turned into classroom facilities and meeting rooms. And the large multipurpose room that currently exists will be maintained in its current size and renovated for use by the Township on a right of first refusal to use those rooms and that large room, all of those rooms to, for community functions, you know, meeting room rentals, those types of, whether it's educational programs or recreational programs. It'll be for the use of the Township.
Because the word training could mean so many things to so many people, right? When you say training, could it be for athletic training? Could it be for sport?
It'll be for whatever people want to do in this space if it's appropriate.
Okay.
It would be a space, all those spaces would be available to the Township. They'll be, it'll be owned and maintained by the Board of Education, but the Township will have full use of those facilities. There's classroom facilities, there's meeting room facilities, and there's the large multipurpose room. So if someone wanted to have some function there or if the recreation department was to run programs there or any other municipal department to, you know, there's been a lot of discussions about things like job training and those types of facilities. So rooms are being set up to facilitate all those types of activities.
So you can say for seminars and conferences?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions from the Board, Ted?
In the past, this specifically, the multipurpose room, has been used for voting for up to five election districts. Is it anticipated that we'll resume using the property for voting? And if so, will they perhaps be more widely distributed?
So, no, it will be used for voting. The facility will be basically for the use of the Township as we see our needs to be met. So the voting function at the building will continue once the building's been rehabilitated. And I'll add, because I know there has been some concern, because unfortunately, in that portion of the third ward, there's not a lot of public buildings or buildings of the size necessary to satisfy all of the voting districts. And so for the short term, we've entered into an agreement for the use of the former charter school on Coeur d'Alene at the Oak Crest Day Camp for use for the June primary and if need be, the November general election. The Board of Education is hopeful that they'll have the building done before the November election, but in the event that it is not done, we have an agreement with the owner of the property to allow us to use that former charter school on Coeur d'Alene for both June and November.
Anyone else with any questions? No? If not, we will. Do you have anything to add in summation?
No.
All right. So what we'll do is we'll open to the public for any comments on the, this particular, not the following one, that'll have its own public hearing, but the, this.
Back in your motion.
Okay. All in favor? Anyone from the public who want to speak on this particular issue?
My name is Jonathan White. I live at 7 Gary Court. Right now, the Board of Ed is sort of in a centralized location in the Township. And I know there are public transportation routes that go around this area. I'm not sure if this Board is concerned with that or what entity in the Township will be concerned with it, but are there any thoughts about whether or not there's public transportation that will get to the Board of Education building if it's moved all the way out to 27?
Well, I can't speak for the Board of Education because I'm not the Board of Education, but I'm unaware of any public transportation routes that go by the current administration building on Amwell Road. What I can say is that if you look at the growth of the population of the Township, actually, the Route 27 location now kind of starts to put it into a centralized location between the population growth of the Franklin Park area of the Township and the more densely populated area along Franklin Boulevard and Hamilton Street, those neighborhoods. So there has been a significant growth in population in that area of the Township. By no means small, but I'm unaware of any mass transit providers that are providing public transportation to the current Board building.
Well, I guess my concern is folks who live in the Franklin Boulevard area and the poorer communities here in Franklin Township. Franklin Park is a distance from there. And I'm wondering whether or not there's any concern about how those people, if they don't drive, can get out to the Board of Education building out that far.
I would say that the distance from that neighborhood, those neighborhoods that you just referenced in this building on Route 27, which is actually not in Franklin Park but in Somerset, and the distance from those neighborhoods and Middle Bush is about the same. It really is not that much further.
Suburban transit runs buses up and down Route 27. We might have to ask to put in a bus stop at the driveway going in there if there is sufficient traffic.
I actually think there's a bus stop on Route 27 at the driveway of the Consolata now for suburban transit.
Oh, there is, okay.
Thank you.
So it will be better off? So, we'll be better off.
Benjamin Guy, 35, Patton Drive. The one question I got is, was, is two questions, really. One is, now that we had this discussion about the Board of Ed and, I guess, this portion, is there any other projects that the Board of Ed has proposed besides this one at this specific timeframe? The reason why I'm asking that is because as we're planning this and we're starting to look at congestion points in the town, I just want to make sure that we're getting ahead of this a little bit more. So this is, this is something that will be surprise for the Middlebush and, and Middlebush area and other people that, that are over in that area because of the school and everything else that's already there. Is there other projects that might potentially be coming up from the Board of Ed that, because our town is getting bigger and bigger, is there other things that might, might come about that we should be planning for?
Well, I, I think you need to address the Board of Education with that question, Mr. Guy.
So I understand that. So because they're not here and their, and this presentation is being done here, I'm just asking the planning board, because this is something else that for the planning board and when we get into the master plan and other things that go on in the town, as we start looking at census data and actually looking at what we're planning for, these are conversations that, again, if the Board of Ed is not here, I'm just asking the planning board to actually look at that and actually do the assessment so that when we do these plans, there is somebody from the representative from the Board of Education here to testify for that specific thing. That's it.
I guess I could answer that this way is somewhat the answer that, you know, Bob provided is that it is sort of a question that you might address at a Board of Ed meeting. The second answer is, in general, in terms of projects, as you, as you put it, the Board of Ed, just like today, has always, as a courtesy, because we don't approve, we, we don't have approval, we can't approve or deny this, or, or for that matter, the youth center coming. But what, what, they always come to us as a courtesy. And so you can always guarantee that if there is a school project, just like the school off of Claremont, that they'll, they'll be here with a presentation, for sure.
Yeah. And the second, second portion of my question is because the Board of Ed mostly is about public schools. So the question about it is that, okay, what exactly is going to go on with potentially private schools? Because there is a rumor that we actually talked about before where there's a third charter that was actually sent out for a third charter, charter, charter school to actually be in this, be in the town. So again, impacting of transportation, school bus routes and everything else that, that we actually deal with driving around, is that part of something that the, the planning board will be looking at as you go forward? Because I know you deal more or less on the municipal side, you don't deal with the Board of Ed side, because we're talking about two different tax bases, but is this something that you're having a conversation on with the Board of Ed on a regular basis to actually get ahead of this? So.
I would say, again, probably a better question for the Board of Ed, I, I can't, I don't really have an answer for that.
Understand.
Unless anybody else does, they're free to give it.
We have not been approached by, for any development or conversion of any building for a charter school.
Okay. Fair enough.
Thank you.
Forty Mansory, 224 Bennett Lane, Somerset. Actually, want to commend the township, township manager. It's something that this community actually needed. The Route 27 corridor have so many people that need these services. I think it will do justice for that community, especially the loop that they have to go around to come to the, to the library and the population growth in that area as well as everybody have alluded. So I want to encourage the township, if there are other opportunities elsewhere, let's do it, but this one here, we should own it and let's take it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Philip Kramer, 475 Demont Lane. So the discerning listener might wonder, wait a minute, this is the school board, why are they talking about rooms that are going to be dedicated to the township? And the reason for that is that when we bought this from Consalada Fathers, they basically gave us a huge discount, about a $1.4 million discount on, on what the value of the land was. The council could have kept that greedily, but they knew that because of, as the manager referred to it, the way the school board acquires and sells property, that wasn't going to work. So we gave up 1.4 million or?
1.55, actually.
1.55 million dollars to the school board with the idea of, and if we had held on to that, maybe we could have lowered our portion of the tax more, but the school tax would have had less money for the kids. The idea being that all the money comes out of your pockets, the people's pockets. So it doesn't, you know, if we save and make us look better, but the school board look worse, it doesn't matter to the taxpayer. The taxpayer's getting the same deal. So we passed that saving off to the school board and in turn, the school board was going to own this land and do something for the community that school boards don't often do is provide meeting space. So this is a tremendous shared service between the school board and the town. And it's, it's kind of the mark, the school board and the town didn't work together very well before, and we're now working together very well. So this, I think, is a huge step forward and is going to provide some badly needed meeting space. If you try to get meeting space in the library across the street here, very difficult to get it. Now there'll be some more available. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
John is tips 25 Parkside, Somerset, New Jersey. Hi, gang. How's everybody? I want to have, well, let me commend you guys, first of all, coming to commend you. I understand there's going to be some, in one of these buildings, there's going to be some job training, some type of training will be going on. And I'm always adhered to that type of information because that's what's needed in our territory so bad in terms of job training for the young, for the youth in the community. I want to have one little question. You talked about food services. Now, are you talking about moving the food bank?
No. Food Services is a department within the Board of Education. It's the people who staff the cafeterias and feed the children every day at school. And it's where the parents have to go to do things like pay for lunches and make arrangements for special diets and that type of thing. So it's food services for the Board of Education. Has nothing to do, those two offices in the front of this building, which will be separated from the rest of the building and, and not accessed, there's no cross, cross traffic between the two parts of the building are for the Board of Education. They're board offices. Has nothing to do with the town.
I specifically asked a specific question. I don't want the food bank to move.
Nothing to do with the food bank.
This, food bank has nothing to do with the township, just so everyone knows they're a nonprofit separate from the township.
It is good to clarify.
Okay, see, no one I move to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This meeting is closed. Thank you.
You want to make a motion to, make a motion to recommend the project with no conditions?
Yeah, I would ask that the, the board make a motion to confirm that this project is consistent with the master plan.
Let me see.
We can do that. Well, why don't you state it just in your words, just so that you're not restating Vince's words?
Oh, okay.
As, as good as they might be.
Yeah, I would twist it. I have a move that the project be considered and implemented as presented.
And consistent with the master plan?
And consistent with the master, master plan.
Mr. Chairman, if I could offer just a few brief thoughts on that.
Yeah.
In terms of overall themes and objectives of the master plan, certainly preserving of the open space, the partnering with the school district, reuse of the existing buildings, and providing communities, facilities and services to serve the community are all themes and recommendations of the master plan.
Thanks, Mark.
Second.
Just call the role there, Christine, please.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Oral Hauck.
Yes.
Maherafi. Saffy Mansory. Charles Brown.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Godwin Amololo.
Yes.
And Chairman Rascini.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the second presentation we have tonight is regarding the youth center that will be constructing very shortly on Lewis Street.
So before you begin, let's just, let me just do a little preamble for the public. So again, much like the Board of Ed presentation you just heard, this is sort of a courtesy presentation to the planning board. It is not for approval, it is not for denial. We're going to have, open to the public, similar to what we just did. But what I'd like you to, when you do come up, if you're so inclined for the public portion, just to save our time, because we do have two hearings after this with, with folks that are waiting. What, what, what we don't need to hear, we already affirm, it's good, youth center, good. No youth center, bad. We understand that. We understand what a positive asset it is to the community. All of that stuff we don't need to hear again. Only if you have, I would, I would ask, please, if you have substantive comments to the plan that you're going to see that are planning in nature, because we're going to essentially do a resolution just the way we pa, we just did for the Board of Ed. So it's not, it's not controversial, I don't think. Okay, with that, go ahead, Vince.
With that, I'd like to introduce Councilwoman Kimberly Francois. She has been the impetus and fighting for this community center for a very long time. Councilwoman.
Can I swear you in, please? Raise your right hand. You don't have to stand. The Asomly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help you God. Everyone knows who you are, but please state your name and address for the record.
Kimberly Francois, 14 Norris Road, Somerset, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. This is truly a historical event. You are currently participating in history in the making tonight. This Franklin Youth Center has been debated, debated, it's been discussed, it's been collab, collaborated, it's been deliberated, it's been requested for over 50 years. So tonight, you're going to hear about the design and the architecture of the building. And we held several community forums with the youth and with the community over a period of a couple of years. And one of the things I just wanted to say is that our youth were very enthusiastic, very engaged, and very participatory in the, in the process. And a lot of things that they told us that they wanted in that building was they said they wanted to be able to eat, hang out with their friends, get help with their schoolwork, play sports, listen to music, have a quiet place to read and hang out, meet new people, make music, play board games, make videos, have mentoring space, have a fitness center, learn something new, get help with problems. They wanted really good Wi-Fi. They wanted, they wanted cardio machines, they wanted a lounge with projectors and speakers and music, they wanted a weight room, Zumba Dance Space Studios, yoga, training classes, basketball courts, library, comfortable seating, indoor track. I can go on and on and on and on and on. They came up with a whole lot of stuff. And so I, I just want to say that ultimately, we want to inspire our youth to achieve an enriched lifestyle. That's the whole purpose of this building. And again, I want to thank the, the community for coming out tonight and showing your thoughts, sharing your thoughts, ideas and interests in this Franklin Youth Center. And I have to say, I'm very, very excited about the project. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce our special project manager, Safi Callan. She'll be talking briefly about the operations of the building so everyone understands, the public understands the specifics, what's going to happen in the building.
You're on the spot, aren't you?
I'm not ready.
Asomly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Name and address, please.
My name is Safi Callan. I live at 25 Alarica Lane, Somerset, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So as you know, my name is Safi Callan, and I'm the special projects manager for the Township of Franklin. I just want to do a brief overview of some of the key areas that we're going to have within the youth center. Mr. Dillon is actually, as he's getting set up, may bring up some of the plans for the youth center. And if you've gotten the brochure, there are some very, very tiny plans in here that you can refer to as well. So if you've been following this project for any length of time, you understand that it's been a very collaborative process with our community partners or stakeholders and the community at large. So you're actually going to hear me use the words collaborative quite a bit throughout the presentation. Talking with the community gave us the opportunity to truly develop what we were going to use these, these proposed program spaces for. So not only has this plan been a living and breathing plan, some of the, the ideas and what we're using these spaces within the community center for have been just a living and breathing entity that's very fluid in and of itself. So on the first floor, we have, I'll just talk about some of the bigger things. We have a large teen lounge and common area. And in that space, the teens are able to congregate and socialize, they have the ability in areas to do homework and collaborate with other students that are also attending the, the center. Through some of our really key advantageous partnerships, we spoke with the Franklin Township Library, and they'll actually be having a satellite library within this space, which includes a program and reading room. A quick anecdote about, anecdote about the collaboration that, that we've done. One of the very, very popular programs within our Franklin High School has been our Franklin High School Aspects Program. And basically, they learn about video production, they've got their own news show that happens within the high school, they do the very, very popular AVA awards every year. So we spoke to the project leader, Michael Pennix, in order to find out not only why and how he does what he does in putting on this program, but finding out the logistics of having a similar program within this teen youth center. So the idea was to have a program and a space that we can use to apply some of this real life experience to some of the future goals that our teens have. In addition to that, as Councilwoman Francois mentioned, they asked for and got a group exercise area and a fitness center where they can not only use equipment toward keeping healthy and exercising, but also have a space for class, whether that be dance classes or exercise classes in general. One of the spaces you'll notice up at the top are the maker space or wet classroom. Now, if you're looking to find out what that, that essentially means, it's just a venue where young people have the opportunity to kind of explore interest with high-tech or low-tech tools or whatever materials may be available. And that wet classroom will allow for science and art in a somewhat non-conventional kind of space, so more, think more tables than desks. The, obviously, because everyone's online, there will be computers that are available and speaking with our IT department, some of those computers are, a lot of those computers are going to utilize virtual, virtual desktops. And essentially, it gives the students the opportunity to use a Mac or a Windows platform without saying, hey, we need that actual hardware in the space. So they can essentially take their, take, migrate their accounts to wherever within the youth center, and it allows for a consistent user experience for those, those youth. Outside, there is going to be a small raised patio area where students can also congregate. I'm going to speak very quickly so as not to take all of your time, but just moving to the second floor, we'll have obviously administrative offices, counselor offices, there's a private space for needed counseling with the youth, there's meeting rooms that are not only for staff, but for youth to do breakout sessions if they have clubs or extracurricular groups and activities that call the youth center their home. There are music and multipurpose rooms. There are lounges that are also on that second floor that are set apart from the hustle and bustle of the bottom floor, but still have an open view. You'll notice when you're looking at the plans that Kimmel Bogret designed this youth center with, in an atrium design, so because they were looking to kind of meld this really beautiful aesthetic with practical purpose. So on the aesthetic side, you have an overall space that feels much less confined for the youth that are utilizing the space. There's a tremendous amount of light. It gives not only access to all of the areas on the first floor, but it gives a nice glimpse of the areas above and vice versa. And on the practical side, it's a clear vantage point for the administrative offices to see what's going on within the youth center and provide some seamless supervision there without necessarily being in every single one of those rooms. So with that, we're continuing to nurture and develop a lot of these partnerships in order to kind of bring other entities in and give our youth more opportunities. So there will be opportunities for community service, life skills, service learning, and outside just the practical uses of the youth center, it's, allows for a safe space for, and a community space that our youth can call their own. and a community space that our youth can call their own. So, you know, I joke quite a bit about how collaborative this process was, but it truly was. Not only is it, there's a space that the youth can call their own, it's a space that Franklin can call their own. And by kind of actively being involved with this, we kind of lift our teens. They, they say, when the, when the tide rises, we all are lifted. So, that's really what we've all been looking to do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Safi. With that, I'd like to introduce Andrew Dillon from Kimbo Boguet Architecture. He will go over the architecture of the building.
Raise your right hand.
Asomly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Andrew Dillon. My address is 482 Norris Town Road, Blue Bell, PA, 19422. I'm not really sure how much more I could elaborate, other than what Safi said. Took the wind out of my sails on that one. So, let's, I, I'll focus maybe more on the exterior. You know, with, with the idea of youth, there is, you know, playfulness and boldness and just, you know, a lot of, a lot of the activity. So, in keeping that in mind, the, the forms of the building itself are very big, they're very bold, a lot of glass, like these, these great expanses of glass at the, the fitness center, which you can see down at the bottom, you know, right portion of the building, the, the large glass atrium rotunda that, that really ties all of the individual wings together, the, the soaring bit of glass at the corner for the library. I mean, a lot of that, it's, it's twofold, you know, it's allows a lot of the, the daylighting to come in, but at the same time, it allows for that connection between the interior and the exterior and really blurring the lines, you know, between the activities going on inside and what is outside. But even though we have these big, bold, kind of playful shapes, we're also trying to, you know, maybe subdue it a little bit with a little more like neutral and earth tone palette. What else? So, we're also looking at some very durable materials, you know, metal siding, two different types, just, you know, to give some interest and to give some, you know, shadow and texture and, and whatnot to, to the whole street front. And I spoke about all the, all the glass that we're doing, and even, even on the second floor, on the, on the right side, where all the counseling and, and whatnot happens, you know, we don't want it to feel like these little, you know, cubicle offices, you know, we still want to have that connection, even though they're up on the second floor. You know, we talked about the, the main volume being this, this circular atrium that really helps tie all of that together. And even with the interior, maybe not, I'm not gonna get into the specifics about the interiors, you know, there's not really a whole lot more that I can add that, that Safi already talked about, but, you know, it does foster educational development and physical fitness and mental wellness, you know, just kind of anything and everything that maybe youth and teens could really look for. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Next up is Jeff Reynolds from the Reynolds Group. He'll go over briefly the, the site plan for this property.
Hi, my name's Jeff Reynolds. From the Reynolds Group.
Raise your right hand, please. Asomly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Your credentials, very quickly.
I'm a certified landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal of the Reynolds Group, civil engineering firm, and I've been licensed for approximately 20 years now.
Okay.
Mind if I walk right over to it? Okay, the, the property is currently vacant, and it slopes from the, from the road down to the rear of the property. We were going to put some curb along the entire frontage of the property, because the street doesn't have any curb currently, and we're gonna put a nice, large drop-off area that will accommodate approximately three cars. The curb will continue around, and we will have a parking lot on, onsite with four parking stalls, two which will be handicapped, and two which could plug into a, a voltage charger. We have a double dumpster there for recycling and for dumpster needs, and we've also got very wide sidewalks in front of the property. Everything is six foot wide, and when we have the sidewalks around the rear, it will become five foot wide. We've landscaped pretty extensively, as much as we could, to buffer the property from the neighbors. In the rear, we have some hemlock trees. On the sides, we've got some viburnums, and in the front, we tried to put some street trees where we could. The entrance is gonna be beautiful with some boxwood and some, some grasses and some, some snow queen hydrangeas, so it would look very, very nice. We've also incorporated a, a flagpole that'll be in the center of the front of the entrance that will have three lights on it illuminating at night. The entrance will have four seats, benches, and it will also have a compacting garbage can for, for people to throw things away. The, the drainage system, most of the drainage is coming from the roof drains, and it's going to an underground system located in the front of the property. When this system, it's a drywall system, and when the system, should it overflow, it will go into an inlet here, a brand-new inlet to catch drainage, and then it will pump 200 feet down the road to an existing drainage inlet. So, all of the rainwater is being captured, held onto the property, and then it is cycled away. We have a connection here, a sidewalk connection to go across the street, and there will be a crosswalk there to an adjacent parking lot across the street from the property. I've put some stone around the edge of the building, landscape stone, for ease of maintenance, so that they won't have to weed whack and, and trim rate adjacent to the, the building. This staircase that we show over here is no longer going to be there, and this will create an access way for Franklin Township Maintenance to get to the rear of the site. The entire site is going to be, it's approximately a one-acre site, I think it's .9 acres, and it will have a board fence, a solid board fence around the entire site, six feet tall. Lighting will be, lighting for the site will come, be mounted on the building, will have one light in the center of the parking lot to light the parking, will have one light on the left side of the building, and one light on the right side of the building. This will illuminate the curbing, the drop-off, and the sidewalks, and then the front of the building here is flanked with four light bollards, and there will also be an awning in front of the entrance, where there will be some downlighting right at the entrance to the building. So, it should look very, very pretty. We've got all of our utility connections coming into the mechanical room located in this area. We've got a brand-new fire hydrant out front, a fire department connection, and we're also putting a brand-new transformer for the property right in the front of the site. Don't know what else I can tell you. There will be no parking in front of the site. We're gonna have plenty of no parking signs, drop-off only. We don't want people with their cars parking in front of the site. There is a patio to the right that is approximately 950 square feet, and this will be a nice patio that the children will be able to access from inside the building or from the outside of the building, because there is a connection around the, the whole building there. Think I covered it all.
Thanks, Jeff. Next up is Rob Russo with Darren Mazzia there from CME Associates. They're gonna go over the site plan for the parking lot. We're in the process of purchasing the lot across the street, so we can provide ample parking.
Thank you.
Rob, are you both gonna testify?
Uh, just, I'm just gonna testify.
Raise your right hand. Asomly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Yes.
For how long?
Over 20 years.
Appeared before countless boards.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna go over the parking lot that's being constructed to, in conjunction with the youth center. The parking lot's basically located directly south of the, of the youth center, across the street from Lewis Street. It's on the southwestern corner of Lewis Street and Shevchenko Avenue. It's designed as a one-way configuration. The entrance will be off of Lewis Street and the exit off of Shevchenko Avenue. There'll be adequate signage for the one-way and stop signs on Shevchenko. As you can see from the plan, we've located the parking lot as far to the north as we could to keep it away from the properties to the south, to create a buffer. There's over 35 feet from the edge of the parking lot to the property line to the south, and that area will be, remain in its current condition. It will not be cleared, the vegetation will stay there. As the engineer said, there'll be a crosswalk constructed on Lewis Street with striping and signage that will direct pedestrians from the parking lot to the center across the street and vice versa. As far as the drainage is concerned, we're proposing to construct an infiltration basin in the parking area. All the runoff from the, the parking area will be directed to the infiltration basin. We will have an emergency overflow connection that will connect to the same system that Mr. Reynolds had mentioned in Lewis Street. So, if it ever overflows, it will go into that system and drain down Lewis Street. As far as lighting, we're proposing LED pole-mounted lights throughout the parking lot. They will have shields to prevent spillage onto the adjoining property. A minimum of two of the lights will have security cameras on them. We're proposing landscaping throughout the site, will enhance the buffers to the south and the west, and as recommended by the technical review committee, we'll be installing shade trees along Lewis Street. As I said, there's 37 parking spaces. I just wanted to note that two of them also will be designated for electric vehicles, and there'll be charging stations for those vehicles. That's basically the extent of, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the presentation. All of the witnesses are available for both board and public questions.
Okay, well, thanks, Vince. We'll, we'll start with the board. Does anybody have any questions for any of the witnesses who've presented? I guess I'll start to my left, since I looked to my right the last time, so, yes, Charles.
Yeah, so, I think the governor, don't quote me, but he just signed a law allowing e-bikes and e-scooters to be utilized in the state of New Jersey. There's a growth of e-scooters across the country. I see accommodations for bicycles, but no accommodations for future micromobility options. So, where would people be allowed to park e-scooters on the site, given the future, future of transportation and how it's quickly evolving?
That's a, that's a good question. So, I think similar to where the, the...
I'll, I'll state my concern. My concern is that we are providing adequate parking, but only for one mode of transportation, and that's the car. And this is a community center, we should encourage that people more often bike and walk to the site as opposed to driving. So, in order for that to happen, we need sufficient accommodations.
Right, so, I think when you look at the, at the plan here, the, like that orange footprint at the bottom left is the library, and, and just to the south of that is where some of the, the bike racks would be proposed. So, I think either we could, you know, couple them up at that point, or maybe even bring them around the side, on the, on the west side of the library as well, where, you know, maybe some of the parking is, we could allot some of that, that space for, for these e-bikes.
So, if you were to take it to the side of the building, please consider safe bicycle parking. The concern for a lot of populations in New Jersey is bicycle theft, so moving it away from the front of the building to the side, it should move from being a bike rack to a bike locker.
Okay.
For making that accommodation.
Got you.
Thank you, Charles. Good observation. Ted?
You have the patio on the east side of the building with a vestibule and a door leading out. Now, is the, is the patio going to be accessible essentially from the street? In which case, that would be an alternative means of entering the building? And I, I see by the, the main door in the front, there's a control. Is, is there any concern about having an alternative and unmonitored entrance to the building?
Well, I, I can say that it won't be unmonitored, and it will be, primarily be a, a way out. It is, it is one of our designated means of egress out of the building, which is why it then connects back up to the street. It, it can be a secondary entrance in. I think, I, you know, primarily, the, the vestibule is to allow for, you know, back and forth between an, an indoor activity and the, and the outdoor activity. But it will be monitored, you know, the security cameras, card swipes, like those kind of things. It won't be something that, that people can just, you know, wander in off the street. And, and it was spoken to earlier about the privacy fence that is gonna go around the building, and it will also, there will be a gate along that, that portion of the sidewalk on the east side of the building to, to allow, I mean, that's kind of like your first barrier, your first buffer to keep people from going further into the site.
Okay.
I, I guess since I'm the next in line, I'll just say that, you know, I don't really have anything substantive. I think the only thing I was gonna ask was about the lighting, and then mostly the parking lot, that that was LED downward-facing. I assume, or the building itself, that's similar? The building-mounted lighting? See, nodding of heads, all LED, or any? Oh, okay. Okay, um, yeah. And the landscaping looks robust? Hopefully, it will turn out that way.
I'll be short. I think you have a terrific concept planned, and having lots of experience working with this planning and zoning staff and building department, that they'll be well-equipped to handle any little tweaks that have to be made along the way, as it, as it's, is still a work in progress.
Mahair, you gotta talk into the mic, they can't hear you. You gotta push it on.
Sorry about that. Two quick questions. One is on the parking lot. Are there handicap spots available?
So, the handicap spots are actually on the building side of the, of the, the two parcels. The handicap spots are in that parking area immediately adjacent to the building. ADA would require the locations to be as close to the building entrance as is available.
Okay. And then on the building, the beautiful glass you have on both sides, is it full-panel glass, or are there windows? Second floor? On the right side?
That is storefront, you know, curtain wall, like that kind of thing. So, the aluminum frame, full, full panels of glass.
Okay, so they're not, it's just full panel of glass?
Yes. No, they're not operable, they're, they're all stationary. We have no operable windows in the project.
The reason, the reason why I ask is that, you know, we're seeing a little bit of a concern around that, of just having this solid glass in those rooms, and for...
So, so, now I get to put on my old hat, which was police officer hat. So, for security purposes, we would rather not have windows that open, and then also for sound insulation for activities that are taking place that might get louder, and this is a residential neighborhood, and the building is being built in such a way that you won't be able to hear what is taking place inside the building, outside the building. If you have windows that open, then clearly you would hear activities that are taking place inside the building, outside the building. So, this building is intended to be contained in that manner, so that there's not an, a noise level that can be heard in the surrounding residential neighborhood, and I think that, that goal or objective would be defeated by having windows that could open.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mahair. Yes, musta. Yes, Mustafa?
Yes, the entire perimeter of the three sides will be fenced.
So if you're talking about the parking lot, the parking lot has a thirty-five-foot natural buffer that will remain between the parking lot and the adjacent residential properties that are on the parallel block. So that buffer will remain, as the engineer explained, and the building itself will have a six-foot fence around three sides of the perimeter. So only the front will be open. And that's what I'm talking about. The parking lot across the street will have a thirty-five-foot buffer between the parking lot, and that buffer will remain natural in its natural state, which is wooded, heavily wooded and brush, that will remain between those existing houses in the backyard, so to speak, of the neighboring block and the parking lot itself. So I mean, I don't know that we could get anything more effective with a fence than we get with thirty-five feet of vegetation. Yeah.
Can you guys tell me the timeline for when the center will open and close for the day? Let's say from 2:00 PM or 8:00 PM? And also...
Okay, so the answer to that is the library will function. We anticipate that the library annexed to this building will function during normal library hours, which would be, you know, from the... At ten o'clock is when the main branch opens until the evening hours, depending on day of week. Obviously, a youth center serves relatively no purpose during the school year, during the school day, during the day. Those kids are in school. So it'll be evening hours, and the anticipation is that the evening hours will end at ten on most nights unless there's a special function. Now, the large assembly area, which is a gymnasium, it serves as... It's a basketball court. It'll have those facilities. But we anticipate that being used for, you know, events for kids, whether it's a dance or, you know, a party for whatever might, you know, the township recreation department might sponsor. It gives an assembly area, so those will be in the evening as well. During the summer, we're still putting together the overall business plan. My lady next door to me here is responsible for that function, with a little help from me. But during the summer, certainly, we have an opportunity here for another indoor location for foul weather, for our summer camp program that's run in a very close proximity at Williams Park. So things that now, where kind of the summer camp program, when it rains, tends to be isolated to underneath the picnic pavilion, now we have indoor spaces to run programs during the summer, during the day and evening. So it will then kind of be a longer day. And there's the... But there'll be staff there from really when they get out of school until ten.
Yeah, that happened to be my next line of questioning, which is, is the center going to be adequately staffed?
Well, yeah, absolutely. It'll have to be adequately staffed. We can't just, like, open the door and say, "Have at it." And we won't. This is a significant investment on a part of the township that we're obviously going to have it adequately staffed. Excuse me. Initially, the first part of that process is to identify what staff will occupy this building on a permanent basis. The Franklin Youth Initiative, FYI, which was actually started by Councilwoman Francois and is headed by Bruce Medley, who's the program director for recreation for the Franklin Youth Initiative, will now have a home. You know, they're kind of the wayward children who take up at the middle school or wherever else that they can find space. And that's kind of one of the main programs that will operate out of this building. And so Mr. Medley certainly will be there on a permanent basis as part of his responsibilities for that program. And obviously, there will be others, and there will be partnerships. We've already worked over the last, I guess, Councilwoman, what's it, about four years now, five years? With nonprofit organizations like Middle Earth, Family Crisis Intervention Unit from Somerset County, the Youth Service Commission, and all of those for different programs that will operate out of this that are adult-supervised programs and counseling services that will work in this building as well. So all of those things will mean that there will be an adult presence here at any time that it's open. But beyond that, there's also an opportunity for employment opportunities for youth. There's a snack bar here. I don't anticipate my staff running that. I anticipate the kids who are attendees at this facility running that type of thing within the building. And there'll be other opportunities as well. The front desk, you know, there'll be overall supervision by adults, a staff member, but things like checking people in and checking people out as the youth show responsibility, and, you know, just like we do with all of our other recreation and camp programs, it'll be an opportunity for those kids to get involved in that part of the youth center as well.
So that means there will be award registration before you can enter the center?
Correct. There's a desk that, you know... So we need to know who's there and who's coming into the building, and we have to make sure that all of those things are handled as well. So there is a level of security. The context that our architects used to design this building was to make it open and inviting, but yet, we live in the real world, and we have to ensure the safety of the people who are there. So obviously, without seeming like they're constantly being watched, there's still going to be levels of security that we incorporate into the building that I'd rather not talk about right now, because they are levels of security. And that will provide a safe place. That was one of the things that when we did all of the different forms with the kids, was they want a safe place to go. So that obviously was part of the whole design process that the architects went through to bring it to this, what you see today.
Thank you.
I have one other question about, is this the official name of the place, or will there be a name? If so, what's...
So we currently have not named the facility yet. We're calling it the Franklin Youth Center, FYC. At some point, we're going to come up with a name. I'd like to call it the Franklin Youth Center, but I'm sure there are people in the community that might want to call it something different. So we haven't gotten to that process.
Did that come up in your survey in your focus group? Potential names for the center?
No, we asked the kids what did they want to have in that building. We did not go into, how should we name the building? We haven't done that yet.
Okay, so the kids didn't quite understand the symbology and name can impact self-esteem and how they view the future of the center?
We didn't ask the kids those questions. We asked them what did they need in a youth center, and they told us.
Okay.
But there's no reason why we can't go back and do that with the youth. You have to quite understand, too, when we first embarked on this process, we weren't quite sure if we were going to be where we are today. So we were doing a lot of talking with the youth about the concept of a youth center and what would they want to have in there. We didn't get to the point to ask them how they want, what they want to call it, but we will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
So I'd like to take that just one step further to put it into context. The councilwoman's right that we have been working on this for several years, but the reality is that we've been working on this since a dilapidated, abandoned building that was owned by the Somerset Community Action Program occupied this building, and it had been vacant for five years and had fallen into a state of disrepair. And it was a great deal of effort and work to get... While that building still stood and was still owned by the Somerset Community Action Program, we began to work with all of the different nonprofit organizations as partners to try to come up with something that could either... At that point, we actually looked at rehabilitating that building and found that the cost of rehabilitation of that building was going to far exceed the construction of a new one. And so that's been really what amounts to about a six-year journey to acquire and do all that's been done to get here, and it's been really the last two years to work with the youth. So that needs to be, I think, said and understood, that this has not been just within the last year or two, but this has been a lengthy process just to acquire the property. The property had federal mortgages through HUD. It was a task. And the other thing is that, for those of you who remember this building, that building was roughly the same size in square footage as this building that we propose now. And obviously, it has a far different look than the previous building, which was built in two different phases from the nineteen, late 50s, and then again in the early 70s. But that building had about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand square feet of usable space, and so does this. And I think that this is vastly different, but also vastly better than what was previously there.
Yeah, I don't see how you would have accomplished this in that space and do it.
Mr. Chairman, before we open up to the public, I'll just briefly go over the timeframe. It's really two phases. The first phase is we've already got out to bid, and we'll be getting bids in next month for start of construction to clear the lot across the street. The reason for that is we want to clear it and provide a staging ground, so there's less impact on the neighborhood for the construction. So they'll be able to bring their materials, their equipment, their trucks and everything else to stage that on that. We're going out to bid in May with a construction start in June of this year, with expected completion of September of next year. So just so you understand what that project schedule is...
You're going out to bid in May, and you expect construction to start in June?
Yep.
Really?
Yep. We fast-tracked everything. The construction department, in conjunction with our architect, has already met three times. The construction permits will be ready and approved, so when we award a contract, they'll just have to change the contractors and move in, and they'll have to mobilize. But we've done that with this schedule, so we can get the building open as soon as possible within that time period. And we're confident we can do it based on how we've been able to keep the schedule so far.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any contingency plan in case if something doesn't fall in place, based on your assessment so far?
Well, we've been very, very careful with the planning, as you could see from the professionals that we have hired. And we've been very consistent in making sure that the review process has gone... Like I said, architect, which normally doesn't happen. We've met three times with the construction department. They reviewed everything. So when they see those construction permits, it's not for the first time. So we're actually, like I mentioned before, the construction permits are going to be ready for the contractor. So all the contractors are going to have to come in and provide us with this electrician, this plumber, and everything to seal them. They'll all be ready. So we've already taken care... We've also taken care of, like I spoke a few minutes ago, about having the staging area, which is very important, because we want the minimal impact to the neighborhood. And also, that allows the contractor to have his equipment and supplies right across the street, so he's going to have to truck him in. That also saves time. So we're very confident, plus our architect, Kim O'Grady, has done numerous projects and is very confident that the project can be completed within the timeframe.
Yeah, because it appears that you put everything, you are writing everything with stone, saying that September, everything will be completed.
That is a hope, and that's what the council and the township manager has tasked me with doing, is making sure that these things are done in a timely manner. And so far, we've been able to keep that schedule, and that is what we expect to do.
I can only say I wish you good luck with that timeline.
So any other questions from the board before we open to the public? Okay, well, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is open to the public. Again, please try to confine yourself to planning comments. I think you got the sense that the board is very supportive of this, as is the whole community. We're not township council, and we like a lot of oratory and little congratulations and all that, just so planning comments would be focused, would be good.
Alex Corazzi, 14, Margaret Drive, Somerset, New Jersey. Mr. Chairman, as a resident of thirty-two years, or actually over thirty-two years at Franklin Township, I've seen how our community has grown from about thirty-five thousand to almost seventy-five thousand. More importantly, I've seen the change in demographic of our township. We used to have only one minority group, but now we have several, and with different faiths, with different nationality and ethnic background. And as a president of Franklin Township Interface Coalition, we've tried to bring different faith groups together so they can have dialogue, they can talk to each other, they can understand and appreciate each other and build unity. I am so thrilled to have a center like this, because I envision the use of different ethnicity, different faiths coming together in such a center, playing together, learning together, helping each other, and developing that strong bond, so we can continue making our Franklin Township a township free of hate and bigotry and having a unity and continuing with that. So I'm thankful to the council, thankful to Councilwoman Francois, who has really spearheaded this effort, and I'm thankful to the board to approve in this so we can move on this as soon as possible. This is a wonderful place for our township. But most importantly, I'm thankful to the taxpayers, because you are the one who are going to be funding this project and be proud of whatever contribution you're going to be making to this project. And thank you very much. But before I sit, I want to welcome Mahir Rafiq. And also, I want to thank our mayor, who gave me the opportunity the last three years to serve as a member of the planning board, and I want to thank every member here for helping me to learn quite a few things during the last three years. Thank you very much.
So Alex, before you go, since you were a member of the planning board, but giving your speech just now, and I said, "Planning comments"? What's your planning comment? This is your final exam, buddy. What's your planning comment?
My planning comment is that this is a great thing. You guys got to approve.
Alex said that. And Alex, thank you for your...
Oh, my God.
Percy Sanders, 2 Evergreen Road, Somerset. I'd first like to commend Councilwoman Francois for her hard work on this project and all of her work in the community, because she doesn't do just one thing. She's all over the place. I think this project is a wonderful project. I'm president of the Week of the People, and we work with the youth. We give out book bags in August to our youth. I know firsthand what ticks or what's going on with the youth in Franklin, and they are in desperate need of somewhere, something to do, something to keep their minds busy, especially in the summertime when they have nothing to do. I grew up with a community center in this township, and I felt that it worked very well. That gives the kids a chance to get to know each other and to play with each other and do other projects with each other. So I just wanted to commend Ms. Francois and the council and the Park and Recreation, which I'm a part of as well. Thank you.
Marilyn Altman. My address is 250 Longwood Lane, Somerset. Kimberly and I went to the oldest center in New York City, the Hennessy Street Settlement, to see program. What we're going to do here is the newest and will be equally as good. I do have a question about landscaping, and that is, knowing what it takes for me to take care of my own little house, I want to know what thought there's been to keeping things very low-maintenance, number one, and two, the water system. One, it would be wonderful if it was a recirculating one, but what way are we dealing with water... But what, what way are we dealing with watering these things and maintaining the plant material? Is it in fact very low maintenance? And by the way, weeds grow between grass, even with landscapes, things under it. Two years, those weeds just love us. So if you could help me maybe and the township, and I think that does fit into your, a real question.
Stole my life.
Yes, most all of the species that I've chosen are low maintenance and require not that much water, so they should survive. In a time of a drought, you know, maybe we could water a few, few plants. But everything here really doesn't need to be trimmed or maintained at all. It's just going to grow the way, you're going to have to cut the grasses every spring or fall, but that's about it. Really, I chose, I took the time to choose some real good species that really shouldn't need to be maintained.
I'm going to get yelled at. She made an excellent point about using some of the water on site for maintenance. And like the roof leaders, for example, can any of that be used to have circulation, permeation on site?
So watch me make Councilman Chase happy. So I, I had hoped that, that we would incorporate a rain garden in this particular site because there certainly is the opportunity to do that. Just to address some of the concerns, the esteemed member of the planning board to my right, far right, is also my manager of the Public Works Department. He's my appointment to your board. And he's also, we have a, certainly have a landscape division within the Public Works Department that's more than familiar with, with maintaining what, what really amounts to a small amount of landscaping on the property because given the confines of the property itself, there's not a great deal of opportunity for landscaping here. But I, I, I think that we can certainly incorporate the utilization of some of the rainwater into things like rainwater barrels and what have you. And, and Mr. Hauck is more than familiar with those, and he was actually involved in the, in the review of all of these plans. So I would imagine that the choice of the plantings are meeting his approval, and he's nodding his head yes, so I'm glad to see that.
Okay, well, thank you. Any further comments from the public?
Hello. My name is Frank Simpson. I'm a member of the Renaissance Community Development Corporation, First Baptist Church. My pastor asked me to come out here and throw our support behind this since we're getting ready to build another forty units of, of housing for senior citizens right down the street. But what I did really want to say, as far as the community aspect of that, that particular piece of land is a very strategic piece of land in this town. Somerset Community Action, which I worked for for many years, and giving Kimberly Francois all the, not all the credit, but most of the credit, along with the township. This is one of the best moves that I've seen in this town in forty years. I mean, we've been building buildings. They've been building roads, but they haven't been doing anything with the community center since Hamilton Park Community Center. And this is really an ecstatic day for me, just to see you guys finally saying, "Do this," and not that. Do this, but not that. But Kimberly, hands off to you on it. Hands off. But you guys are all doing a great job. Plus, every time you come, you got different memos on the planning board. What's going on? What's going on?
We're actually pretty consistent.
Geraldine Fudge, 35 Ray Street. I too want to congratulate Kimberly for the fine job that she's done because I know this has been a brainchild of hers for years. I've been here for almost fifty years, and I've heard this for forty years. So I am so happy at this time to hear that we are going forward. I know for a fact that the children use the park for different activities in the summer, and when the weather is inclement, they have no place to go. They're hugging under this shelter. So this building is going to be an asset for our youth. So I'm, I'm hoping that the planning board will see the assets that it will bring to the community. Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you, Jerry. Carl.
Looking for this microphone. Okay, I have three questions, naturally.
I was actually taking bets on the over-under that you'd speak, but I knew, I knew better to do that.
Name and address, please.
Carl Wright, 139 Fuller Street, Somerset. Also, the fourth ward councilman in Franklin Township and sitting Doug where this is supposed to be built at. Couple of questions I have here, and the township manager answered one, but I want to go back to it because I want to be clear on that. Well, let me get to that one. First, you said trees on every side of the building. All around the building, you'd have trees. And I guess that's to keep people out instead of keeping them in. So that's my question. If you put a fence up, is it wire, chain link, or whatever? But does it actually keep people out? Now, I'm six foot three, and you're building a six-foot fence. So how does that work with keeping people out?
Well, there's no desire to keep people out. The fence that surrounds this is a privacy fence. It's six feet tall. It'll be made of a composite material. And then there'll be a border along, on the inside of the, the fence of plantings, tree plantings, to provide further, as they grow, privacy to the surrounding neighbor, you know, the neighbors that surround this property. But this, this isn't intended to be a security fence. It's a privacy fence, is to, to afford the adjoining property owner's privacy from the building. It, we're not, we're not creating a...
Security fence.
Security. Yeah, I mean, exactly. We're not, this, this was not intended for security purposes. There would really probably be no need to climb the fence because you could go to the front of the building and walk alongside it.
Oh, see, I, I wasn't worried about walking alongside of it. I was just wondering if I want to climb over the fence.
Well, I mean, if you want to climb over the fence, councilman, I won't stop you. But I don't know why anyone would want to do that because there would be no need to do that. And it's not the type of fence that you could stick your toe in, like a chain link fence. It's more of a decorative privacy fence.
My next question that I have. Traffic. Now, during the hours of operation, no question about it, traffic. Now, you're on a residential street. How does that operate? Your hours during the daytime may not be as heavily used. But during the evening, afternoon, during operating hours, say after three o'clock, how does the traffic, how is traffic going to be controlled? How will the speed be controlled? Because let's face it, we can say we're going to stop the traffic. We can say, hopefully, maybe the traffic doesn't speed. But let's not be stupid. It, it will happen. And that's one of my questions. Now, the neighbors asked me about that, so with them watching television, I want everybody to explain, how does traffic slow down? Now, you mentioned you have a little walking or something.
There's a crosswalk from the building to the parking lot.
Right, crosswalk. That's a beautiful thing, but how do we stop traffic?
Well, I, I, I don't think you stop traffic. I think that that's an unrealistic expectation, to stop traffic. I think that the, the center is being designed in such a manner that it provides an area for people to pull off the road and allow people to get in and out of cars. There's a thirty-seven stall parking lot across the street for those who are coming with vehicles and staying with their vehicles. I think most of the people who will be visiting this location don't drive, so they'll probably be dropped off. The parking lot affords the opportunity to do that off the street. I, as far as people speeding, I think the nature of this street is one that it's fairly narrow. And, and given, you know, my, my previous experience with the, with facilities being built in, on streets like this, if there's a, if there's a need for enforcement or if there's a need for additional facilities to, to, to bring that under control, then that's what the township will have to look at. But I don't anticipate a tremendous amount of, of vehicular traffic as drive-by traffic. This is destination traffic. So the, the, the traffic will generally go Lewis to Chivenco to Hamilton Street and vice versa. And, and that, that's what I would anticipate to be the circulation of traffic visiting this building. The closest street out to a main street is Chivenco, and that's to Hamilton Street. But, but certainly, you know, there's, there's an anticipation of some increase in traffic. Although, the, the former use probably generated more traffic than this use because the former use as a daycare facility meant that many, many people were bringing their children there and dropping them off in the morning and picking them up in the evening. And I would think the trip generation probably would have been greater for that type of facility rather than one that will be either children walking there, riding their bicycles there, or being dropped off by parents.
So there wasn't a traffic study done, right?
There was not, there was not a traffic impact done, no.
So do you think, do you think there might be advisable to do something in terms of speed bumps or some raised type of sidewalk in the crosswalk like there is in the, you know, the road, the ShopRite? You know, you have that.
So I, I, I think that I, there certainly is a possibility that we could look at some traffic calming devices on, on Lewis Street itself in front of the facility. I don't know that raised walkways, that's, that certainly is a possibility. There's in-street pedestrian crossing signs that tend to slow people down due to the narrowing effect that they have with something in the middle of the road. I think that this road is twenty-four feet wide, cross-section in, in front of the building with an added, now, drop-off lane that at that point would then probably create a thirty-two-foot cross-section there. Rob, gentleman, I'm, I'm right? Yeah, so there I go. So I'm, I'm pretty close off the top of my head. So certainly, we can look at some kind of, of traffic calming devices on the road in front of it. And I, we, with pedestrian traffic, you would want that anyway. And I think that that would probably be advisable as we move forward. Just whether, whether there's a concern for the, the traffic itself, the more the concern for the pedestrian who crosses.
Mr. Arseni, that was a good, a good question you asked, and I'm going to follow up on that one because I, no matter how great we are, someone's going to speed at nine o'clock at night. Ten o'clock at night, someone's going to speed. There's no doubt about it. That street, you can go through Lewis because people live on that street, so uh-uh. During the day, fine. But somewhere in that night, we got an issue. So I just wrote that down to keep that in mind for myself. Noise from the building. Ms. Francois said that to me a long time ago. And I, I, I got a good schooling. Former councilwoman, when we were doing Middle Bush Park, the people lived way away. I don't know, two football fields, football field and a half. Well, I have people living right next door. No question about it, right next door. You can throw a rock and hit them, you know, grandma could. So noise from the building, I, I think the gentleman here said you wouldn't, the noise level or something of that nature, or someone mentioned that, the noise level?
I, I think what you're referring to is maybe that the windows don't open.
So the issue I think that Councilman is speaking about is things that were discussed at prior meetings. There was a presentation made to council. The, the building is made to be not only energy efficient but sound absorbing so that the, the thickness of the walls and the, and the material that's being used for construction and, and, and the solid pane glasses, not windows that open, will basically create an indoor facility where noise won't be heard outdoor of the facility based on its construction technique. Am I right down the right road here? Okay, that's what I thought. So I, I know that the, the noise was brought as a concern by Councilman Wright at the presentation made to council, and I think that that's what you're referring to, Councilman, right?
Absolutely.
That's what I thought, okay. So, so, so the construction is being done in such a manner to, and, and it was already being taken into, to consideration so that that wouldn't be a problem for the surrounding neighbors?
But if I understand this right, the previous use had noise.
Oh, sure.
Had use, probably more use. And what you're replacing it with is a huge improvement over all of those issues.
You know, one, one of the things that, that we did take into consideration was originally there was, was, was included in the plans, outdoor activities, whether it be a basketball hoop or, and those were removed out of concern for this impact on the neighbors. The previous use had an outdoor playground for the kids, you know, so there was certainly that, as well as a basketball hoop and, and, and other activities that took place outside. So you're right, Mr. Thomas.
Well, we're fast-forwarding to 2019, and I'm going to ask that question again. I understand what you're saying, and yes, it's an improvement. Mr. Thomas, the building is an improvement. I love the building. But still, that issue does remain. But I'll put it down here on my little piece of paper, and when I get back to the neighbors, we'll work on that one. Lights. Building's open till ten o'clock. Fence is six foot tall. The building is how many stories? Two. Two stories. So that top story, I look out my bedroom window, where's the light? Now, if you tell me you got a curtain, you're going to pull it shut so the light stays inside, I'm with you, one hundred percent. If my neighbor's next door and he sees the light and he calls me on the phone, I got an issue. So I'm thinking you're going to close the curtains at night, and there's no light whatsoever. So Mr. Arseni, is that what we're doing? Because I'm going to ask you as chairman.
Well, Mr. Arseni is going to ask the witnesses to tell you.
Are you asking about how are we controlling the light coming from interior, inside the building, out?
Right.
Yes, okay.
And also, you have lights on the outside.
Correct.
And I need to know, okay, it's ten o'clock, building's empty. It's eleven o'clock. Are my lights somewhere on in the building, security or something of that nature? I understand.
Sure.
But that's one of the questions they're going to ask, and I need to have an answer for them.
All the, all the exterior building-mounted lights will have like a shield, the shade on top. And with the LEDs, they're primarily just downlights.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, we're trying to avoid any of the, the bleed out from the site. So this will be just more, you know, more contained within the site itself. And, and one of the things that we will be specifying as part of the project will be interior shades for all of the windows. So, you know, the majority of this, I mean, just looking at that elevation, it's, it's south-facing, so we're, we'll want some anyway to control some of that, you know, midsummer evening sunlight coming in. But at the same time, those shades will, will control the light that, that is also coming out.
See, Mr. Arseni, I know, I knew you would answer that question pretty good.
Also.
I'm glad you're happy, Carl.
And the reason why I brought that question up. But don't you have the ability to, to reduce some of the outdoor lighting after a certain point?
Yes.
So that should alleviate issues with parking lots. Like at, at ten o'clock or ten-thirty, certain lights get shut off.
Yes, they're on timers. The reason why I asked, I was kind of shocked. I thought the lights at Middle Bush Park would be sort of like the lights over at the baseball field until I walked in, I saw these towers big as trees outside. And it kind of took me back. I really didn't think about it being that high, and it was. So I'm sensitive to that now, and I needed to find out. And again, we're on TV, so whatever I say, residents hear, and they won't shoot me when I get back. So we took care of the lights. We took care of our traffic. We took care of our noise, and I put a little X by the noise because that's a good thing. Oh, the last thing I have here. It's ten o'clock at night, we're in a residential neighborhood. The lights are down or whatever we have, the shades are there, and that's beautiful. But the kids are out at night. I have a crowd out there at night, it's midsummer's night. Where are my police officers? Do I have a security office outside? Do I have them inside? Do I have them there until the building closes? Just how the security work? I might have missed that point, but again.
Well, I, I, I think that that's an operational aspect of this, Mr. Wright, not a planning board operation. But as far as security, it'll operate like all of our other municipal facilities. And if there's staff members there providing uh, supervision, they'll have to provide supervision until the building is empty and all of the children are on their way. That's, that's just like any other building that we have. We currently run recreation programs in a building right on this campus here. And they're run by the Recreation Department and they provide the staff supervision until the children go home. That's just a, that's just the rule of the road.
Yeah, one more question. How many more bites of the apple do I get? Cause when I go back and my residents hear this and they say, Carl, I got one more question. So do I get another bite at the apple or, or is this it? Do I need to go outside and make that phone call right quick?
So, Mr. Wright, you understand that they don't issue an approval for this process.
We do.
You're the elected official in this town that this, this project goes in front of, and the schedule has been explained.
Oh, yeah, I, I.
And that, and that's what it is. I mean, there, there, this is, this is uh, as a courtesy review that was requested by council that this be project be brought in front of the planning board so that they could review the project. This, the next step in this process is funding and awarding of bid.
So there's no more bites at the apple even though we are council members?
I, you're, you're, this is a council, you're, you're raising a council issue, not a planning board issue.
Okay, so at the council meeting, we'll, we'll look at that issue.
Well, listen, you know, I, I would assume that as in any township facility, Carl, uh, where anything occurs, that if something were to occur during the operation of that facility, be it the municipal building or, you know, you built, you approved this gazebo out here and all that wonderful stuff. I mean, things change. Nothing's perfect, things change over time and you adjust. So I think it's not a question of bites of the apple, but maybe polishing it.
Oh, I, I understand that, but you gotta ask the question?
Yeah, no.
Because they asked me.
And you're on TV.
Thank you.
We know that.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Questi Mensah, one sixty-eight Matilda Avenue, Somerset. My concern is about sidewalk. Sidewalk, uh, there is kids that walk in front of my house, one sixty-eight and Louis. And since this project is gonna be on Louis Street, people don't have enough sidewalk on the street. You could see the trees in front of my house, even when I called the town to come and cut the trees down, it's a problem. Things falling left and right. And uh, I think it's a concern for me. Uh, I have four kids that would like to walk around, to go to the library and stuff like that around the corner. But there is no uh, sidewalks for them to walk on it. Either they have to be on top of the street, walking on the street, and with the traffic concern that he was talking about, especially between uh, my corner, one sixty-eight, Matilda and Louis. Almost every month, there is a serious accident, either in the morning or in the evening over there, one sixty-eight and Matilda and Louis Street. So this thing is coming around there, there should be a sidewalk and there should be a light, at least on one sixty-eight and Louis. So that it will slow the traffic down.
Any, anybody wanna talk about sidewalks?
So sidewalks really, sir, are, are, again, I, I, and I, I'm gonna repeat what Mr. Arseni said. I- if you have questions about the specific design of the building that was presented or the site plan that was presented, this is the planning board. Um, you, actually, the previous speaker is probably the guy you should talk to about what you're asking for. Um, Mr. Wright has been the champion of sidewalks in Franklin Township for the last four years, and, and we just got done with one project and we're about to take on another. So the installation of sidewalks is a township council function, not, not a planning board function.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, but they.
What Bob says is right. But what I'm, I'm just making sure your question is, you're talking about sidewalks in front of your house? Or are we talking about sidewalks in front of this youth center?
No, I'm talking about the sidewalk.
On Matilda Avenue.
Where the case will walk.
Oh, okay.
To the youth center.
Related to the.
They're just gonna go on top of the street.
Carl's your man.
All the way to that place.
Right, so, so the installation of sidewalks on public streets is really the something that should be addressed, you should address to the Township Council. Like I said, Councilman Wright, who's, who's in the back there, has been the champion of sidewalks in, 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 uh, in Franklin Township and we're, we're budgeted another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the installation of sidewalks in the twenty nineteen budget, which gets introduced on Tuesday night. Um, so, so that, it certainly is a, an issue that is at, uh, the, the, on the radar for Township Council. I, and I, and I hear what you're saying, but this is not the forum for discussion about sidewalks on Matilda Avenue.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure your question was about sidewalks in front of the youth center, cause then we would've had a different discussion. Okay.
Ode Manzari, two twenty-four Bennett Slins Somerset. Um, I want to commend again everybody who worked on this project. Councilwoman Kimberly Francois, and the redevelopment agency. No amount of money spent on education, on youth, is a wasted money. So whatever we have to do to perfect this project for the next fifty years, I think we should do it. The community needs it. And um, the gentleman mentioned sidewalk. It's not to be addressed in this here. I know my brother-in-law live across the street from over there. That raises the other question that I want to ask. Um, the traffic situation. Um, the township manager mentioned about thirty-foot buffer on that side. Would it be better for you to put the parking lot on the other side exiting on Ralph Street? Because.
We, we don't own that property. There's houses there.
Yeah, the reason why I'm saying, the reason why I'm saying that, these areas, you have so much traffic, um, population increase in this area. You have to accommodate for proper parking and, and the traffic adjustment. And I, I really would want you guys to look at that project from that end also, because what Councilman, um, Wright said is true. The, the speed limit on that street, we have to address that. Because if you park across the street and then you have to walk over, it's a concern. It's a concern. And I don't know how we have that buffer.
No, I, I think that you're misunderstanding, Mr. Mensari. The buffer is at between the houses and the parking lot behind that. So if you look at that picture on, right there, look at that picture. The empty white space that's not parking, just on the other side of that line from that empty white space are houses. There's, we don't own that property, so we can't go and move it on the other side.
I, I, I'm coming to that.
And that, that lot is far.
I'm coming to that side also, because the, the question that is being raised, the depth of that property, and how that fence is gonna look like also.
Now, there's no, now, you're, 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 you're really, you're not understanding what I'm saying. That lot is only a hundred feet deep.
Okay.
All right. The, that's not, it's insufficient in size. We can't flip this project and put the building on that lot and the parking lot on the other.
I'm concerned about, your parking lot is in the front, right?
No, 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 the street is in between the building and, and the parking lot. Do you understand? That's a street in between.
I, I, I know.
Right?
I understand Louis Street. What I'm saying, your parking lot is on one side, you have to park your car and come to the building on this side.
Right.
Okay, now.
But we don't own any land on the other side that will, that we can put parking.
Okay, I, I understand that also. What I'm saying on this side, where you are parking, is a concern for speed limit. We address that. And two, the type of fence that you're going to put on this side.
There is no fence on this side.
Um, I believe, uh, the board member raised the issue that, um, on this side, where are you going to put the parking lot?
Yeah.
You said you have a hundred-foot buffer.
No, no, thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five.
So look at the, look at the map, Foti. You see the, see the stripes for the parking lot?
Uh-huh.
You see the line that runs parallel to the big white space that's empty? So that big white space that's empty is vegetation and woodland.
Okay.
That's the buffer between that and the houses behind it.
Okay.
On the parallel block.
Okay, you're not gonna have any fence there?
There, there, you, there's no place to put a fence. There's thirty-five feet of woods.
Okay.
And, and vegetation.
Because the reason why I'm saying, I started my comment by saying, a project in this magnitude, when you do it, you do it right. Whatever money is invested in, in education, it's no money wasted. And I don't think you have sufficient parking on that side, what you're, what you're trying to do in that little corner right now. Back of the building on Ralph Street.
There is no back of the building. There is no space. Do, do, that's what I'm trying to get at. There is no space to have parking behind the building. That, that's it. See the black line? Look at, look at there, look at the map.
I'm looking at it.
So the brown is, no, no, the brown is the building.
The houses in the back, that's what I'm trying to say.
What?
You could acquire the houses in the back.
No, we're not gonna acquire houses in the back, Foti.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I, I, like I said, I said, education, any amount of money, because when you start having accidents on that road, like what Councilman Wright said, you have to look at it. That's all. It's a suggestion. Thank you again. I think you guys did a great job. And thank you to the township, to, to everybody. Thank you.
Councilman, I wanna, I wanna just point out that if there are a lot of concerns about speeding on that street, one of the things that could be done is the crosswalk from the, um, off-site parking that's across the street to the building could be a raised crosswalk. That's what, that's what the chairman suggested, and said, we can look at that, when I just spoke with the engineer who designed the parking lot and said, we can incorporate traffic calming. I don't know that raised, so, so I have a little bit of expertise in traffic calming devices and speed humps in general, so that I don't know that the width of a speed hump and, or a raised crosswalk is appropriate on a public street. And, and there's a lot of issues that, that are related to that, and there's a lot of studies that have been done as it relates to speed humps and raised crosswalks on, on twenty-five mile an hour residential streets. Um, there's something, it, it can be looked at, and we'll certainly have the, that, Mr. Russo is the Township Engineer by contract. We can certainly look at that as well. Um, I, there's other things that can be done, and we can look at the traffic calming devices that could be put into use in front of the, in front of the center.
Good after, good evening. My name is Keith Crandall, live at four eleven Louis Street next to where the building is supposed to be put up. Um, Kim, you're doing a good job. Um, the reason why I'm standing up here, I wanna ask two questions. One, um, can you tell me why it have to be ten o'clock? Why not nine o'clock? Can anybody answer that?
Well, it doesn't have to be any time at this point. This is, this is the, the, as far as the operational aspects of it are still in talk, in discussions and, and really, I call it concept. So that, that type of input is something that we will certainly take into consideration. There's nothing hard and fast at all as far as that part is concerned.
Okay.
We need to get, this particular purpose of this meeting is so that the architects can submit everything that needs to be submitted, do our, our bid specifications, and have the building go out to bid. And over the next year and a half, we have an opportunity to have discussions about the operational aspects of this building, hours of operation and what have you before September of next year if we hit our target. So no, all, all of those things are not set in stone.
Okay, and the second one is, are you thinking about having like a security guard or maybe have like, if you do have it, ten o'clock closing or nine o'clock, have like a officer just to ride to make sure that the kids ain't hanging around, you know, how kids are, you know, we once with kids, you know, wanna hang out, where they have like a officer say, well, leave the building, you know, it's closed down.
Well, certainly the police department will be involved in all of these different parts of the operation of this building, and, and, and I would anticipate that not unlike the teen recreation program that we currently operate out of the middle school, there's a, there's a great involvement on the part of the police department, and there's a police officer's presence there every evening that it's run. So that, we, this is not, we're not creating a prison, understand that too. So this is not a police state, and this is supposed to be welcoming and inviting to the kids, so we don't wanna make it look like there, there's a, there's a constant police presence. But certainly we have to take all, all of that into account.
Saying, even though you may have the kids that is in the building and stuff, you may have other kids not in the building or it's not supposed to, and be around the kids, maybe start in trouble or whatever, cause I live there.
Mm-hmm.
And I know, you know, a couple of times I had to call the cops, you know, cause people be in the area who's not supposed to be there. So that's why I'm just saying for.
So, you've been, you've been there a long time, right?
Yeah, forty years.
All right, so, so back in the late eighties, I got to go to that building often when there were parties that night. Yeah, so, so, so no, I'm talking about at night, uh, two, three o'clock in the morning when it was, so I was one of those cops that I used to come.
Yeah.
So I can appreciate exactly what you're saying.
Right, right.
And that's why I'm saying, this would be treated very much like the, 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 uh, the T-Rac programs that are currently run where the police officers are there.
Kids will feel safe too with the cops around them too.
No, they're involved in the program. The police officers will be involved in it, not just there as security, but will be involved in all of the activities as well. So that's the idea.
And then, um, the bumps, you know, maybe put some bumps like, um, right?
Right, what we're talking about. That, and that's where I just, I, like I said, I called the engineer over and whispered in his ear to start working on incorporating it.
They do fly like, even like some of the neighbors down the street, they be racing up and down.
That's usually what it is.
Sometime I have to go out and say, you know, we're not having this around here. So, you know, that would be a good thing too.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Donnie Stubs again, one thing. I just wanna say this. I was the manpower director, Scott. I was the one that got the acapice for the first enter the building. We had two daycare programs, fifty staff members, and numerous activities going on every day. There was cars parked on both sides of the street. We didn't have no parking lot. That's, that, there was not one accident. There was nobody ever hit. There was nothing ever happened. So you don't need no traffic bumps. I got eighteen-year history, twenty-year history, with nothing, with all the people in the buildings, and nothing ever happened on that street in terms of traffic, except for moving smoothly. I just thought, you should know that.
So what's our sis, what's our secret?
Uh, Jonathan White, um, seven Gary Court, Somerset. Uh, I have a few questions. Somebody made a reference to, uh, the Recreation Department, and I'm wondering, uh, and if I miss this, I apologize. Is the Recreation Department now moving from this facility over here?
No.
Into that building?
No.
Is there, was there a reason why it wouldn't be best suited for that building?
There's not enough room in that building to sta, I mean, we have a significant staff in our Recreation Department. The Recreation Department also oversees the senior programs, and they're, they'll remain here in the municipal complex in the Recreation Building.
Um, is there a basement to that building? And if not?
No.
Was, was there any consideration of making more space, uh?
Cost factor, we're, we're about stretched right now. The design, they're, the basically, the, the architects were given a number, and, and in this particular case, there are cost factors involved in this, that it would be extremely cost prohibitive to build a, additional space below ground.
Um, the bidding process, who will handle, um, accepting whichever bid is for, goes for that?
There's a, I mean, that's by law. The law governs the bid process.
All right.
State law, but it's the lo, uh, local public contracts law of the state of New Jersey.
Okay, so, so we're assured that local companies will, will be?
No, you can't be assured of any of that. It's governed by local, it's governed by state law. And that's, I mean, the, the local public contracts law is a rather complex thing, but you're not, you, you cannot specify where the companies are from. That's against the law.
What about, uh, minority bids for?
It's against the, it's, that is not permitted by state law. It goes to the low bid that meets the, all of the qualifications required in the specifications to bid.
Now, what about, what about searching for bids? Is there a affirmative process used to search for bids, or is it just whatever comes in?
The bid is advertised according to state law.
All right, my last question may not be handled by this, uh, cause it's similar to, I guess, the sidewalk question, but I'm wondering if the planning board or this group can suggest to the town council, we, you talked about the mode of transportation for most kids will probably be by bikes.
But it, it'll be one of the modes. I don't know that it'll be most, but it'll be one.
Um, there are very few bike lanes in, in, in that surrounding area and, and the city in general. And I'm hoping that this board or whoever handles this project can make a suggestion to the town council that they be, there be bike lanes instituted across the, the township to.
So there's a Bike Ways Master Plan that's part of the master plan of this particular board. The ma, the master plan is under review right now. I was party to the creation of the Bike Ways Master Plan in the early two thousands. Um, in addition, there was a complete street study that was done for the Hamilton Street corridor recently by the Somerset County Planning Board. I actually spoke with the Somerset County Planner yesterday about furthering the, uh, the implementation of the plan on the Hamilton Street to include bicycle facilities on parallel streets to Hamilton Street, where on-street parking prohibits the ability to put in bike lanes on Hamilton Street. So yes, 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 yes. I think that it's a wonderful idea, and we continue to look at opportunities where we can do that. So there, there's a number of things that are outside of this particular project as we move forward with the Hamilton Street Business District improvements, where we're gonna begin to look at those streets that run parallel and also Hamilton Street proper, and how it is, uh, accommodates alternate means of transportation. Not only, um, bicycles, but, uh, pedestrian, uh, facilities as well. So, yes.
And thank you, uh, Councilwoman Francois.
And just to, just to further that.
And just to, just to further that, what Bob just said, it, it might be, and I think most of it's online, but to answer your question, it's really, that was really not part of this hearing. It's a great question and it's part of the circulation element of the master plan, part of the bikeways master plan, like Bob said. So you might want to get your hands on that just to see what's in it. I think it's mostly online, but Mark, Mark Keely's our planner. You can always talk to him and he can point you to the right direction. And as Bob said, we are this year reexamining our master plan. So all that's done in our planning board sessions, in our work sessions, which are advertised. All right, Bob, you're up. Don't see anybody else, so make a motion.
Move the class to the public.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. One last word, Kim. Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you, everyone who has come tonight and provided your input and your interests and your concerns about the building. We will have additional community forums to have more and more input from you. This is not the last bite of the apple, as Councilman Wright said. So as we move forward and start looking at what's going to be in that building, what kind of programs and services we're going to offer in the building, who wants to run programs in the building, we're going to be looking for community partnerships to help us run that building. This is not going to be a township municipal owned building. It's going to be a community building with your help. So thank you all for coming and we're really looking forward to our project. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you all for your testimony and thank you. And I'm just going to have to ask the board to, just like we did with Consalata, somebody make a motion that we support this as consistent with the master, master plan. You want to do that, Conwy?
No, no, no.
No, you did it so well.
Somebody's talking to you.
Oh, Ted, maybe you're going to do it.
If I could just ask a couple more questions. Mr. Robinson?
Well, Ted, maybe we could have like done this a little earlier after I, you know, before I closed the public.
Well, I'm sorry. I'd ask some questions there.
Nap time there maybe.
The hemlocks, are they subject to the woolly adalgid?
That's a great question. I haven't heard much about the woolly adalgid in a long time. And I think if, because they haven't been around for some time and if we plant these hemlocks back there where there are no other hemlocks or woolly, woolly adalgids, I think we have a good chance of survival in creating a small hemlock stand back there that will really, you know, thrive in the shade and create a nice buffer.
Good, good. And I just wanted to ask in general, energy efficiency, will this be an energy efficient building?
Yeah, it will most certainly be energy efficient. There's very stringent, uh, uh, energy conservation codes that we need to follow. The LED light fixtures, you know, trying to think what, I mean, the plumbing fixtures, you know, kind of the, the, the low flow plumbing fixtures, just everything soup to nuts will be very energy conscious and, and efficient.
All that glass, will that be whatever you call it where you have two panes and a?
Yes. Yeah, insulated, low E, all of that. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. So that we won't leak heat through it. And will they be shaded enough in the summer that the building won't heat up too much from the?
Yes. We will have shades on the interior. Plus some of the, the south facing glass will actually have a bit of a tint to it, almost like sunglasses. So it'll, it'll, it'll keep the inside from heating up like a greenhouse.
Okay, good.
All right. So in the future, Ted, let's put that in the right part of the meeting, not, you know, after the public. We had the whole experts and everything. So, you know, put it in the right place. All right. So I need a motion for?
I'll move that we should approve or recommend the moving this project forward. It meets a lot of planning objectives, not the least of which providing recreation and educational opportunities for, for kids, counseling opportunities, job training in some situations and a whole host of other things that we don't need to necessarily list now.
Okay, thanks. I'll second that. Christine, pull the board, please.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Maher Raffey?
Mustafa Manzri?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
I'm not getting out of this without making one comment. I'm going to vote, yes, I think it's a great project, but also want to say that both of these projects tonight show a level of cooperation, planning that would not, all of us deeply inside must know that this project should have been done 25 years ago. It couldn't have been done because there wasn't the leadership from the mayor, Councilman Francois, the township staff to push something like this through as we all saw something this positive could get a little testy even tonight. You're all to be congratulated for sticking to it. The votes, yes.
Jennifer Ragno?
Absolutely, yes.
Godwin Amalola?
I concur with what my colleague just said, yes.
Okay. Chairman Orsini?
Unequivocally, yes. And thank you for your presentation tonight. And I hope the board and public input has been helpful. Thank you.
Great teamwork.
Chairman, thank you. Board, thank you. Appreciate your time tonight.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, board. I appreciate it too. And Mr. Thomas, thank you for giving, saying the leadership of the mayor, but this is Kimberly Francois. It's her leadership. I mean, all the councils involved, but it's her leadership that that's really put this through.
All right. Phil, you know, we've closed it. We, we got other stuff to do. Do it at council. Do it at council.
So now I'd like to address the township budget.
It's my gavel tonight, Phil. Okay. So let's have the hearing on. So the ordinance, Mark, you said it's taken care of?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't have to do anything?
Completely?
Yeah.
Or just for the architect? If the architect's here from California, their travel budget. All right. All right. So we'll do, we'll do Bridgepoint.
I have a comment on the ordinance.
Well, we, we're not going to hear it right now. We got to get this done.
It's been adopted.
It's been adopted, so.
It's been adopted.
Take it offline. Peter, I'm sorry for the delay.
I have a comment.
But you want to have Bridgepoint? And then I'm willing, if your architect's here, we can hear the, I mean, it's.
If, if.
It's your travel budget, but I mean, I, I'm sensitive, so I want to.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, but I think it makes more sense.
Okay. I appreciate that too. Thank you, Peter. And I know that Bridgepoint will take 10 minutes or something like that, right? At least.
At this hour.
But I mean, it's very simple, right?
11 minutes.
10, 10 minutes and 30 seconds.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is application for Bridgepoint Somerset LLC, Peter Lanford, appearing on behalf of the applicant. If the board?
Hold on. Hey, Bob, Von Lacher, can you close the door or talk elsewhere? Thank you. All right.
As the board may recall, we were before the board last year on two separate occasions for site plan approvals on the subject property. The first application involved three buildings consisting of approximately 1,700,000 square feet of warehouse space. We then came back and amended the site plan approval to reduce one of the buildings from about 1 million square feet down to 600 and some square feet. The application tonight is a minor subdivision to create three lots. The purpose of the minor subdivision is really for financing purposes. There is no change to the site plan that was approved. There are some variances because when we drew the lot lines, certain lots got more of the open space and some lots got less of the open space. So there are a couple of variances that we will be seeking with respect to this project. The irony of this project was that the original application involved three lots. The board required us to consolidate those three lots. So now we consolidated, consolidated them into one lot. Now we're going back to creating three lots. I'm going to call as my first witness and my only witness, Mr. Frued, who was the site engineer who testified in the previous applications.
Raise your right hand. Somely, Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, guy.
Yes, I do.
Name an address for the record, please.
Robert Frued, F as in Frank, R-E-U-D. Professional address is Dynamic Engineering, 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey.
Licensed engineer in state of New Jersey?
Licensed engineer and planner, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Frued, as I indicated in my opening comments, you testified in the previous applications in this matter when we obtained site plan approval. Is that correct?
I did on both occasions.
Okay. And can you very briefly review what the original project consisted of? And I assume you're going to rely on the exhibit, which is on the board to our left. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I'll mark this A1.
And can you indicate what A1 is?
A1 is subdivision plan exhibit. It is the same subdivision plan that the board has submitted in the package. I dated that. I put 3/20 today's.
You know, I just want to, before you get into, I just want to make one quick announcement for anybody who might be here for the second application, CRPCHI Veronica. We're going to hear that in its entirety at the next planning board meeting. It's, it's too late to start it now. It's a big, fairly big application. So if you're here for that, it'll probably be carried to the first week of April.
I, I think for the record, you better indicate it's carried to April 3rd without further notice.
There you go. But I just, for the public's, if anybody's here for that, I didn't want you to sit here and only to find out. We're not, yeah.
And you've extended the deadline for action. I think you're well within the time to act, but if you do need an extension, I'll grant it. It is? All right. I will grant the extension.
Yeah, great. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
No problem. So while that was happening, I did mark the exhibit as A1 with today's date of 3/20/2019. It is the subdivision plan. It also shows the proposed site improvements, the same plan that was submitted to the board. We've added some color to identify the three lots that are proposed. As Mr. Lanford indicated, the site improvements that are shown on this plan are entirely consistent with the site plan approvals that were granted by this board and reviewed by your staff. And that includes the three buildings known as facilities. One, which is in the yellow on the right side of the page, Facility Two, and I should take a step back, Facility One, as part of the reapproval, was identified as an Amazon facility. And Facility Two is in the, the purple in the top left, also fronting on Randolph Road. And that is about 300,000 square feet. And Facility Three is in green on the lower left or northwest side of the property, fronting on Weston Canal Road. Again, none of the site improvements are changed with this. When you look at the property overall, all of the coverages are consistent with the previous approval, including the lot coverage where we obtained a variance for de minimis increase over the allowable coverage of 60%.
Now, with respect to the three lots that we're creating, all of them meet the lot area requirements of the zone, correct?
They, they do all meet the lot area requirements. For the record, there, 70 acres is Lot 7.07. And we did get lot numbers from your Texas effort. 707 is the yellow lot, Facility One, that is about 70 acres. Lot 7.06 is Facility Two, or the purple lot that is 26 acres and Lot 7.05, which is the green lot that is 32 acres.
Okay. And as I indicated in my opening statement, because of the placement of the lot lines, there are two deficiencies that we have, one involving impervious coverage on one of the lots and the other one is a rear yard. Can you review those with the board and show the board the, the lots that are affected and how they're affected?
Certainly. The first, the impervious, impervious coverage variance is for Lot 7.07, which is again, the, the yellow lot, which was where the Amazon facility is. The proposed impervious coverage on that lot is 73.2% relative to the ordinance allowance of 60%. Rather than gerrymander lot lines in an unusual configuration to try to match the allowable percentages, we put the lot lines in places that fit in with the site plan and where the, the drive aisles were and the facilities were, were most appropriate.
So in a sense, this variance is only getting created because you're re-subdividing these from the one contiguous property that was there where it was over, but not by that extent.
Exactly. So where we're 73.2 on that lot, the corresponding coverages on the other two lots, it's a percentage come down. The overall percentage of this site of those three lots does not change.
Right. The other variance is a rear lot yard variance?
Right. And that is for Lot 7.05, which is the green lot of Facility Three. The darker green shade is the building. On the right side of that or the south side is where that building comes to within 12.9 feet of that lot line that will be created where 100 feet is permitted. Again, we're not adjusting any of the relationship of the buildings to the driveways or the buildings to the other buildings, the buildings to any of the other infrastructure or structures on site. This is only the relationship of that building to a lot line that's being created for tax purposes. So from a layout and a light air and open space standpoint, everything will remain consistent with the previous site plan approval granted by this board.
And, and for the record, that rear yard variance, that, the, the building abuts the parking lot to the next warehouse, it, and maintains the same distance from the building in the, on the yellow lot that it did originally, correct?
It does. There's a, a common drive aisle. There is tractor trailer parking and courtyard before you get to the building. Same separation between the two.
Okay. And with respect to the future operation of these facilities, will there be cross-access easements, cross-drainage easements, cross-parking easements as requested by staff?
Yes, there will. The access, circulation, utility, infrastructure, stormwater management, drainage, all will be cross-maintained between the three properties.
Okay. Now, in conjunction with this application, there was a staff report that was issued by the Technical Review Committee dated February 12th, 2019. You've had an opportunity to review that report, have you not?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes, I've reviewed the.
Okay. And the, and there were some minor changes to bearings and meets and bounds that needed to be corrected and we will comply with all of those requests. Is that correct?
Yes. In fact, because this hearing was carried from the February meeting, we did make those revisions. We submitted those on March 5th. So those are reflected on the plan. There's up on the ESO on the most recent plans that are in your packages.
Okay. And then very briefly, because we are creating two variances, even though they are consistent with the site plan that was previously approved, can you render an opinion as to those variances in your capacity as a professional planner?
Sure. Those variances can be viewed in what we call the C2 capacity, which is where we look at the positive and negative criteria. First, we would look to see that they advance purpose of the municipal land use law. As I mentioned, there's no change in the site improvements that are proposed here. So we're still promoting light air and open space on this property. The overall coverage is consistent with the previous approvals and previous layouts. Also with the space between the buildings and the same circulation patterns, we're promoting purpose I, which would be a desirable visual environment through the design of this site. Again, these variances are created only by the tax lot lines that are proposed. So when we look at the positive criteria versus the negative criteria, the positive criteria does allow for the creation of tax parcels for each of the lots and improves the flexibility for ownership. And when you look at the negative criteria here, as far as the impervious coverage, it is again, the same impervious coverage that the planning board reviewed with the previous application. So any negative criteria associated with parsing out impervious coverage for this particular lot, 7.07 versus the others, is, really has no significant impact, certainly no substantial detriment to the public good or? impact, no, certainly no substantial detriment to the public good or impairment intent, uh, to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zone ordinance, uh, because it is, again, consistent with, uh, the previous application.
Thank you, Mr. Frude. I have no further questions.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, comment number eight references the need for a phasing plan for construction of all the infrastructure. Uh, can you comment on that now?
Certainly, in a phasing plan, um, we do not intend to phase the project, though it will be divided into separate tax lots. The ownership at this point remains the same, uh, and they intend to build out, uh, the improvements, uh, together. And as I mentioned, the, right, as I should mention, I should say, all the stormwater infrastructure serves the entire property, so it would all be built out, uh, at one time.
Okay, and the water lines, being that the, uh, project is going to be on two meter pits, how will that work with the different lots?
Uh, the same as it would work with the other lots. It'll be, uh, metered for the joint ownership, and they can have, uh, submetering, sub-metering in each of the buildings. That's something we can work out with the water co-- water department.
Okay.
Just a follow-up question. So you'd said you're building it out at one time, but the Amazon is moving forward. Are the other two buildings going to be built now?
All, all of the site improvements, other than the parking lot for the, each of the buildings, are going to be built at the same time. So all the detention basins are going in, all the driveways are going in, the parking lot for Amazon's going in. The only thing that we have not submitted applications for permits for the remaining two buildings. But all of the infrastructure that services the project will be built as part of the first building, so that'll all be in place.
But ba-- based on that, Carl, so that sounds like a phasing, so, a plan showing basically what Mr. Lanford just described should be submitted, so we know what you're building at this time.
If appropriate, a phasing plan, uh, could be provided, certainly, but i- infrastructure is not intended to be phased in installation. It would be, if anything were phased, it would be the, the walls and the buildings themselves. Uh, but my understanding, and is common in, uh, this market of industrial space, is that these buildings can be built on spec, and the tenants often come in as the buildings are going up, when they get leased out. So they will start building them, uh, as the site is ready for the buildings to go up.
Okay. And I think a plan, just what you said, would suffice. Uh, you know, we're concerned that the infrastructure is in and, and ready to go.
Not a problem.
Sure.
I'm sure, Chris.
Uh, I just want to confirm with respect to the C2 analysis, that the benefits that you have identified substantially outweigh any detriments.
That's my opinion, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do have to open to the public.
Open to the public.
I second. All in favor?
Hi. Seeing as-- No one come forward. I, can we close to the public?
I'll second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any more board comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Application.
I'd like to add one condition, if I could, to the maker and seconder of the motion, that all of the conditions from the resolution and the prior approval in PLN 18007 remain conditions of this approval.
Bob Thomas moving, and Godwin Amalola seconding, and Christine calling--
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq? Mustafa Mandri?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So Peter, in the interest of time for your Veronica Avenue application, will you agree to grant us an extension? Um, uh, it's, right now, the deadline, it's on my sheet of paper, says 3/14, so, I don't know.
I will grant you an extension of time through April 30th, 2019.
Okay, thank you.
And we will see you in two weeks.
Just in case there's a blizzard on April 3rd, I don't know, you know?
Or my flight gets delayed.
I don't think so. Um, okay, one last thing, board. Uh, we do have to open to the public in general, um, just like the normal public comments that we normally do, but because of the length today, we didn't do them, and I didn't want to get Peter out of here. So can I just get a quick motion to open to the public?
Motion to open to the--
Second.
I'll second.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
I wonder, is there any--
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Next meeting is April 3rd, and, uh, we will, he'd be hearing, so save your mountain of paper for, uh, Veronica Avenue, please, and, um, welcome again, Mahar. Um, you'll find that the most, um, taxing thing, if you can remember the microphone and not get yelled at by Christine, is the hardest thing we do.
Motion to adjourn?
I will second that. All in favor?
Hi.
Meeting is closed.